Good afternoon. Welcome to a special joint meeting with the Planning Commission Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. I would like to introduce our planning commissioners and welcome them to this meeting. We have Chair Christopher Rizzotti. We have Vice Chair Abraham Attakunian and our fellow commissioners, Mr. Michael Elrich, Mr. Robert Monaco, and Ms. Samantha Wick. Is Mr. Monaco here? Or? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. Yes, that's Mr. Monaco. Yes. All right. Thank you all for being here today. I'm reading my script. I'm going through it. Oh, right. Okay. So, this again. Vice Mayor Schultz is joining us remotely this evening. Hello, Vice Mayor. I can see him on my screen here. On September 13th, 2022, the State Assembly passed Assembly Bill 2449, which permits teleconferencing for public meetings if there is just cause or emergency circumstances to justify the teleconferencing. Vice Mayor Schultz currently serves on the American Public Power Association Policymakers Council. He is currently attending the APPA Legislative Rally in Washington, DC, and we appreciate the Vice Mayor for being Burbank's public power advocate. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for joining us remotely. We are here today for a study session on housing legislation. I welcome City Attorney Joe McDougal to begin the study session and introduce this afternoon's special counsel. Ms. McDougal.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and the public. This evening, we're having a special study session on housing legislation. It's a good thing to do, but it also happens to be a requirement of our settlement agreement concerning the Pickwick Housing Litigation from late last year. It's an obligation to provide this training to the council, the planning board, and to the community by the end of March of this year. And so that's kind of the urgency of finding a spot in the council's busy agenda to deliver this content. So it's both an obligation, but also an opportunity to go through the legislation. It's fairly dense material. The slide deck was posted on the agenda, and we have afforded several places in the slide deck for there to be questions from the city council. I've asked the city clerk to set a 10-minute timer for each of three question periods just so we can get through the material before 6:00 PM. There'll be a fourth period for council to ask questions at the end of the slide deck. There's no time limit on that. It's just whatever the council's pleasure is to move on with their other business. So it can be as long or as short as the council deems sufficient to cover the material. Members of the public appear and ask questions at the earlier public comment period, and the public will also be able to ask questions at the general public comment period or make comments, and council can certainly give further direction or ask for additional items at future agenda meetings. But tonight, this item is intended to satisfy the city's obligation under the settlement agreement. And to that, I would like to introduce Ms. Barbara Kautz from Gold, Farben, and Littman. She is a recognized expert statewide, recognized expert in community development and housing. She served for several decades as a community development director in planning, and also has a relatively short, a couple decades' career as an attorney, both advising municipal clients and housing and nonprofits. Is truly an expert in this subject matter, has presented to both small cities, medium cities such as Burbank, as well as councils of government on these very pressing matters. So with that, I turn it over to Ms. Barbara Kautz.
Welcome, Ms. Counsel.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for having me here, Mayor Anthony, and members of the council and the planning commission. Thank you for making all this time for this. So I need to have somebody bring up the slideshow, the PowerPoint. There we go. So let me give a little bit of an overview. So I was asked to describe the major state planning laws, and I think the council and the commission probably know there's been a flood since 2017. I think there have probably been over 100 bills related to housing that the legislature has adopted. To those of us who are trying to implement them, the attorneys and the planners, they're complicated. They're frankly often poorly drafted. They have a lot of ambiguities. So even though this is a very long presentation, as I went through it on the plane, I thought, oh, my God, how long is this? We're really only kind of presenting the highlights, and I'll do my best to answer any questions about details that people have. But just so everybody's aware that there's a lot of details that there's just not time to go through, and that I think people would die of boredom if I tried to do that. So saying that, I heard that there was a request that the slide deck include the statutory references, and I can go back and do that, and so that if, you know, what's posted on the city's website will show that. But I think to go through that would kind of further complicate it right now. Oops, sorry. So in terms of how this presentation is organized, I have a few slides just about the housing crisis and about the really serious situation the state and many people are in that's led the legislature to adopt these bills. Then I'm going to go through the major state housing laws, starting with the Housing Accountability Act, which is sort of the overview of all of it, and which is intended to make it very difficult to deny housing projects and really does that. Then there's a whole series of bills that were basically the legislature has taken over local planning and saying, and has said, you have to approve this whether or not it conforms with your plans and whether or not your community likes it. Then there's a, I'm going to talk a little bit about ministerial and by right approvals, which are approvals that basically are supposed to be treated like building permits, very routine. A little bit about the consequences of noncompliance, and then about communicating with the public, which I think is really difficult because a lot of important projects can be approved with very little opportunities for public input. So let me start with the housing crisis. So this chart, I think, is kind of the most serious, I would say, in terms of what the housing problem is. And if you look at the highlighted lines, the blue lines, you'll see that 80% of lower-income households, which in LA are, is either a single person earning less than $66,750 a year, or a family of four earning less than $95,000 a year. 80% of those families are rent burdened, meaning they're paying more than 30% of their income for housing, and almost half those families and households are paying half or more of their income for housing. And so that's obviously created a lot of hardships, and you can see that as incomes become lower, more and more people are overpaying for housing. And by the time you get to an extremely low-income household, which would be a family of four earning less than $35,000 a year, 90% of those households are rent burden, leaving much less for other needs. To some extent, this is a reflection of the rising inequality. This chart shows that higher-wage jobs have tended to increase faster than lower-wage And you can see that a lot of the angst has to do with the real collapse in housing starts since the Great Recession. The last time, it's estimated, I've heard different numbers, that the state needs to build 180,000 units a year. The state needs to build 200,000 units a year. But you can see that the last time the state was close to that was around 2003, 2005. This chart stops in 2019, but the number hasn't gone much beyond 125,000 since then. So you can see that there's been a complete collapse in housing starts in California since the Great Recession. The numbers increased a little bit since the state started adopting these bills, but it's come nowhere close to restoring what's happened, what, you know, the kind of construction that was happening prior to the Great Recession. The Burbank's, this is Burbank's housing construction, which really has, seems to have collapsed even further. So this was the housing production in the last, in the last housing element cycle between 2014 and 2021, with the bar on the right showing the total number of units developed in that period. And the number of units that was supposed to be developed is on the top bar, and you can see that not even half of those units were developed, despite really massive job growth in Burbank. When I flew down this morning, Southwest kept saying we were going to the media capital of the world. So that's good, but the housing clearly didn't keep up with the job growth. This is the same chart, but it shows the actual numbers, and you can see there were a number of years when not even 100 housing units were built in the city. So there are many causes for this. A lot of what I've read said that one of the results of the Great Recession was that there is huge labor shortages in construction workers. We all know about increasing construction costs. Now that interest rates are higher, are higher again, the number of building permits is declining rather than increasing, rising inequality, lots of different reasons. But zoning and planning approvals are the area in which the legislature has focused its efforts. There's very few bills that deal with these other issues. I did, I looked at the Urban Land Institute magazine, and developers say the biggest issues are interest rates, cost of capital, and the availability of labor. And I think the legislature feels they can't do anything about those, so they can't focus on zoning and planning approvals. As you know, many legislators come from local government, and they feel that they know it. And I think we all have to be honest that zoning and planning approvals certainly have paid, played a part in projects not getting approved. So with that, I'm going to go through the major laws, and starting with the Housing Accountability Act. So this was adopted actually many years ago. You can see here that it was originally adopted in 1982, and seems to have been amended almost every year since 2017. But this was language that the legislature added in 2017 about the Housing Accountability Act, and it indicated that the intent of the Housing Accountability Act is to curb the capability of local governments to deny projects, housing projects, to reduce their density, or to make them infeasible. And they felt that that intent had not been fulfilled, and they, and their point in making many more changes to the Housing Accountability Act was to make it much harder to turn down housing developments. So the Housing Accountability Act applies to housing development projects. It does not apply, according to a recent court decision, to a project that includes only one single-family home, but it applies to obviously any residential project of two or more units. It applies to a mixed use project where 2/3 of the units are residential, 2/3 of the square footage is residential, transitional and supportive housing, and emergency shelters. And some of the key provisions that have been adopted in recent years are these. One, the opportunity for an applicant to submit what's called a preliminary application, and that freezes developments, the city's development standards as of the date that the applicant submits this preliminary application, which you could call an abbreviated planning So that, so long as the applicant submits everything that's on the list in the legislation, they're entitled to freeze the city's planning and zoning regulations, and anything that's not in effect as of the date this is submitted can't be imposed on the project. That's one change. A second change is that the staff must notify the applicant in a very short time, 30 to 60 days after the application has been found to be complete, if there are any inconsistencies between the project and the city's zoning and planning standards. And if there are, and if the letter doesn't include something, or if the deadline is missed, then the project is deemed consistent with the city's planning standards, whether or not it's actually consistent. And I just saw a Superior Court case out of San Marino where somebody missed the deadline, and the court said, well, then, you know, the project's deemed consistent, whether or not it's actually consistent. This is a big pressure on the staff. Then the project is assumed to be consistent if there's substantial evidence that would allow a reasonable person to assume consistency, which is very legalistic, lawyerly language. But what it really means is if somebody can make a good argument about why their project is consistent, I mean, I think I would phrase it like this, that seems kind of a reasonable argument, then it's supposed to be found consistent, whether or not it really is consistent. And lastly, there's a provision that says that no rezoning is required if the general plan is inconsistent with the zoning. Now, planners, you know, general plans often show big ranges of density. They might show that in this area, you can get 20 to 60 units an acre, let's say, and planners consider the zoning to be consistent if it allows 20 units an acre, 40 units an acre, 60 units an acre. But many developers seem to be interpreting this to mean that the general plan is different from the zoning, and that if the general plan says 20 to 60 units an acre, the developer's entitled to 60 units an acre. There's a current case at the Court of Appeal involving the city of Los Angeles that may, where this is a big issue. So we'll know how the courts are going to be interpreting that. Another key provision is that the project can already, can only be denied if it doesn't comply with or is inconsistent with objective standards. And as I mentioned, the legislature has kind of tilted the deck to finding projects consistent. So, but clearly, if there's a height limit of 75 feet and the project is 50 feet, okay, then it could theoretically be denied. Or if it does comply with all the objective standards, then the project has to result in what's called a specific adverse impact on public health and safety. And a specific adverse, people say, well, you know, people tend to think of specific adverse impact like a sequoia impact, like an environmental impact. You know, you're having an impact on views. Maybe you're having some impact. But to make this finding under the Housing Accountability Act, it has to be a quantifiable and unavoidable impact, and this is what really has limited it, that's based on objective, identified, written public health or safety standards. And also, the impact cannot be mitigated. So I've tried to think of examples. One might be, you know, septic tank requirements. And these don't apply in Burbank, though, or well water requirements, where it's just not possible to meet the health and safety standards, or possibly a requirement to underground utilities in a very high fire hazard zone. Maybe there's no other way to mitigate the impact than to actually underground the utilities. But it's, but I actually haven't, don't have a client yet who's been able to make this finding. I mean, doesn't mean it can't be made. I'm just saying. And then the bill also makes it, requires an additional finding to deny a project that has 20% lower-income units or 100% moderate-income units. And the city has to be able to make, in addition to making the finding I already read, let's say that the project doesn't comply with objective standards, the city also has to make one of these five findings. These are quite summarized because they're pretty lengthy in the statute, that the city has met all its obligations under the housing element law to actually build all the housing at the right income levels. That's almost impossible for communities to make. The specific adverse impact finding, the denial is required to comply with state or federal law, maybe something related to stormwater, that it's proposed on agricultural land, or there's inadequate water or sewer, or that it's inconsistent with both the zoning ordinance and the general plan land use designation. But to make that finding, the community has to have a housing element in substantial conformance with state law, and it can't be made up for a site that's shown for housing in the housing element. That's what people have gotten excited about, called the builder's remedy. And it doesn't apply in Burbank because you have a certified housing element. Congratulations. But, so what developers have been doing in some communities, I guess Santa Monica in particular, is proposing projects that don't comply with the zoning ordinance or the land use designation, and arguing that the city's housing element is inadequate, and therefore they're entitled to build the project, or the city in any case can't make this finding. So that's another one. So any decisions under the Housing Accountability Act based on inconsistency has to be based on objective standards, and that, and objective is defined as involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official, and that's verifiable by an external benchmark, something that can be measurable. So I have here examples of, you know, density, height, lot coverage setbacks, floor area ratio requirements. Those are all generally considered to be objective standards. Courts have found some of the standards I have on the right as not objective, a requirement to reflect the look and feel of the community, be compatible with adjacent uses, or the site is not physically suitable for the proposed use, which is actually a MAP Act requirement, but the court said that was not an objective standard. Now, there are ways to deal with these issues with objective standards. For instance, reflecting the look and feel of the community, the city could adopt detailed design standards that would explain what that means. In, if you think about downtown Santa Barbara, they have detailed design standards about what the look and feel of downtown Santa Barbara is supposed to be, but they have to be, they have to be defined. This is a case, this is probably the leading case on the Housing Accountability Act and some of the new laws. It's CARLA, which I think stands for California Renters Legal Assistance versus the City of San Mateo. And here, the issue was whether this particular standard I have up here was an objective standard, and it had a standard that if the height varies by more than one story between buildings, okay, that's pretty objective, a transition or step in height is necessary. And there was also a graphic in the design guidelines showing what was intended by this. And in the hearings on this, the city attorney said the standard was objective, and after a lot of controversy, the city turned down this project. But the court decided that was not an objective standard for a whole variety of reasons. One is that the staff and a design consultant had initially concluded that the project conformed to the standard, but the planning commission and the city council disagreed. The Court of Appeal felt that both of the interpretations were reasonable. Remember this reasonable person standard, which the court, which they felt, first of all, under the reasonable person standard, either interpretation worked, so it had to be approved. And secondly, since both interpretations were reasonable, the court said, well, then it's probably subjective since there's two reasonable approaches to this. Other issues were that the standard didn't define what a transition meant, and the step in height didn't talk about how much it had to be stepped back, was it the whole length of the building or just a bit? Anyway, it describes, you know, the kind of, the kind of detailed, detailed standards that the courts are looking for to make a standard objective. So I have here some implications for Burbank. One, there's a very strict standard for what an objective standard are, is. The court in CARLA had one, one, one thing that would be helpful to local government. They said that the city could, San Mateo could have actually applied a condition of approval to the project to make the floor step back where it wasn't stepped back, but any of the, and so that subjective standards can be used to apply conditions, said that a couple of times. But it said that, but those, but those conditions can't reduce the density of the project. They can't make an affordable project infeasible, and they can't effectively deny the project. Also, for a project that's just reviewed under the Housing Accountability Act, the California Environmental Quality Act still applies. And so far, the courts have agreed that all the SEQA processing needs to be completed before the Housing Accountability Act applies, although there's a bill in the legislature to try to define effective denial, to try to counter perceived SEQA abuse, another quite complicated, quite complicated bill. Just another thing is that, again, here, the staff has to meet very strict timelines in the statute to determine consistency. So with that, I can finally stop, and you all can ask questions.
Mr. Mayor, so I'm going to ask the city clerk to set a 10-minute timer just so we can get on to the next segment after this.
Okay. Any questions from council at this point? Yeah, Councilor Mullins?
I just have really a curiosity. Looking on the chart on page six, in 2019, so we're looking at about 125,000, and according to what you said, it kind of very much stopped the housing development around that time. It stayed steady for around 125,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's stayed at about that level since, a little bit increased.
And then on page nine, we have the many causes. And when I look at the many causes, they really, in my opinion, a lot of them apply to during the pandemic and after the pandemic, like labor shortage, construction costs, material shortages, we all know, interest rate has gone up. And so I'm a little bit puzzled to why did it stop at 2019 at 125? It was also 2017 and 2019 were almost the same level of development. And back then, the economy was booming. I mean, everybody was investing. I think, I was living here, and I, you know, I've seen people spend money and build. So I kind of don't see the correlation between the 2019 and the many causes, because to me, this applies to pandemic and after pandemic.
Yeah. I think many of these things, though, did, particularly the labor shortage, during the, you know, during the Great Recession, a lot of workers and, excuse me, a lot of workers and also firms exited the construction business because you can see how it collapsed. And I've attended some webinars where it's a constant problem. And I, I've attended some webinars where it's, it's a constant problem. Also, you know, there's more controls on, there's a reduced immigration, so immigrants were an important part of the construction labor force. So, even, so anyway, I think that's been a constant problem since, since then. So, I actually, I think your questions are very good, and I haven't done a comprehensive look at the hous, at the housing. I have, there's another, there's another slide we thought about showing, but it, you know, we're kind of getting too long, but it shows that multifamily construction more or less recovered after the Great Recession, but single-family construction has never recovered. It was much higher, and then it's, and it's, and it's much lower now than it was before the Great Recession. And I, you know, it may be a question of the state running out of places, you know, for those grand single-family developments that occurred in the 50s, 60s, 70s. I don't really know what the, what the answer to that is. Anyway, I think, I, I, one, one of the points I take away from this table, though, is it can't all be local government, because if anything, people have been upzoning since, since the Great Recession, rather than downzoning, yet, yet, look at that collapse, it's never recovered. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Press.
Just one question. When you talk about the key provisions, the staff must notify applicant in short time. What differentiates the 30 and the 60 days?
Oh, it's how many units there are in the project. If it's 150 units or less, it's 30 days, and if, and that's a pretty big project. If it's more than 150 units, it's 60 days. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit of a follow-up question to Ms. Mullins. So, on page 14, under the key provisions, it's, says that in order to, one of the provisions to deny a project is city meeting the RENA numbers, right?
Right.
Has any city in California met the RENA numbers?
Well, certainly not in the sixth cycle.
Okay.
In the fifth cycle, you know, Beverly Hills had a number of three, so they met--
Oh, did they? Okay.
They met the RENA. There were, you know, I think, the only communities I'm aware of that met, had very small numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the reason why I ask is because, looking again at what Ms. Mullins was talking about with the causes, is that, and as you pointed out earlier, is that, on page nine, is that most of these causes have, are completely out of our control as a city.
Yes.
And so, I'm just wondering if the RENA numbers are, if there's any kind of, at the state level, consideration to look at the RENA numbers to see if they're actually reasonable numbers to expect our city to, cities to be reaching for. I totally believe in stretch goals, I think that's great, but in order to, if, if we're expected to reach those goals in, under an umbrella where we have very little control of the variables of what's stopping us from reaching those numbers, that seems like kind of, it's like a setting up for failure. So I'm just curious if there's any kind of readjustment being considered for the RENA numbers.
I got a, I received an email saying that HCD is going to be holding some kind of a workshop on the RENA numbers. Interestingly, a lot of the criticism they received, I'm not sure about in the SCAG region, but certainly in ABAG, is they thought the numbers should be even higher.
Wow, really?
So I think it would be good if local government participated in those, in those workshops. Where I think the numbers are really unreachable is in the lower-income housing numbers, because there's not enough, there's not enough subsidy, there's not enough money in the state for every city to meet its, its, its RENA numbers. I mean, the subsidy per unit is extremely high, and there aren't, there just aren't the resources.
Yeah. May I ask one more question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so in that same vein, I totally understand the RENA numbers from a perspective of how many houses we need to house people. I get that. But I, maybe the, maybe the missing piece isn't the RENA numbers, maybe it's like you were saying, that the, the fact that the needs to create the housing that we need is not provitable by the cities, and that if we can meet those RENA numbers, we need to partner with the state and counties to, to help us fund those lower-cost housing and subsidize them so we can meet our RENA numbers. So maybe it's more of a, the RENA numbers maybe are more accurate, but we need some more support, and I'm just curious if, if that's part of the conversation, too.
Yeah, I think that's part of it. I mean, you know, the legislature, when they eliminated redevelopment, eliminated about a billion dollars a year that cities were, had available to assist with housing. And, you know, there, there's been a lot of money, but it's never, it's never been totally restored.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yeah. Mr. Vice Mayor, you're up, if you want to ask any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent presentation, I am following from here. I have two questions. I'm going to depart, I disagree a little bit with the thought process of two of my colleagues. I want to look at slide nine. I understand that there are other market forces at play to affect the production of housing, but ma'am, would you agree that there are examples prior to these state laws of cities weaponizing or using their zoning code or, or process of approving or entitlement projects to essentially say no to all housing developments? I mean, there's a reason that these laws exist, correct?
Yeah, I, and I thought that I said that there's no doubt that planning and zoning plays a part in, I'll look this way, there's no doubt that planning and zoning plays a part in, you know, in the housing crisis. I mean, I was a planner for 30 years, and, I mean, I, I think anyone who's gone to a lot of public hearings knows how, you know, housing projects have been killed. So there was a reason for the state to do it, I, but it's not, it's not the total, it's not the total answer, that's all.
I appreciate that, and I agree with you. I think there's many reasons. The second question I have is on slide 13. It would seem to me that at best, so, so the term a direct adverse impact, which is one of the reasons to deny a project notwithstanding state law, it would seem to me at best, a council or a planning board could easily be confused about what that means, and at worst, it could be weaponized as a means to, to erroneously deny a project. So when we talk about a specific adverse impact, what can you tell us about the case law? Is it an impact on residents? Is it an impact on only humans, or could it be equestrians? Or what does the case law have to say about an impact to whom?
There's very little case law in this. The one case that I'm aware of was decided before the current language was in the statute, but it has to be an, a specific adverse impact on public health and safety, and it has to be based on objective standards. So I worked in one community where there was concern about whether the evacuation routes were adequate. That certainly seems like a health and safety issue. The city had no, no, no adopted standards for evacuation, and so, even though that, certainly a legitimate concern, and the project didn't require any environmental review, so that even though that's certainly a legitimate health or safety concern, the city could not use that to deny the project. And there's language in the statute that says it's expected that this finding will be made rarely, and, as I said, none of my clients so far have felt comfortable being able to make such a finding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's our 10 minutes. I just have one quick request. When you do cite case law or court decisions--
Uh huh.
If it's possible, could you give us the name of the case?
Yeah, and I don't remember the name of that one.
Okay, all right. Well, there was some, some stuff earlier where you had mentioned court decisions and case law.
Yeah.
Just in the future for the rest of the presentation.
Yeah, I did do the, I mentioned the CARLA case.
Yes.
The San Mateo case, but I believe it's involved with the town of Ross, but I can't, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, thank you, if you can, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Shall we move on then?
I'll try to add that one.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Okay. Do I do it? Yeah, okay, thanks. Okay, so, so now I'm going to talk about the, the bills that really tell cities what they must do, regardless of whether the cities want to do it or not. And I'm going to talk here about, just very briefly about housing elements, because you've had numerous hearings about housing, the housing elements, a little bit about the Housing Crisis Act, the AB 2097, which was just passed this year and became effective January 1st, which generally doesn't allow parking to be required or enforced for any use within a half mile of a major transit stop, two bills to allow housing to be built in commercial areas, and then accessory dwelling units in SB 9, although I'm going to mostly talk about them in terms of ministerial approvals. And then lastly, the density bonus law, which, which allows projects with sometimes a small amount of affordable housing to get increased density and waiver of development standards. So Burbank, so I think that, and maybe the most, I think maybe in the long term, the most important change here has been the increase in the regional housing needs allocations to cities in this current sixth cycle. You can see that Burbank's increased by, looks like about three and a half times between the fifth cycle and the sixth cycle, rather than needing to have zoning to accommodate 20, about 2,700 units. Now the city, this, in the city's adopted housing element, it needed to accommodate 8,800 units. And about 40% of those have to be at 30 units per acre, so that they're suitable for lower-income housing. There's other things that the housing element law requires. It requires that the cities accommodate transitional supportive and emergency shelters, have, have provisions for reasonable accommodations for disabled people and households, but I think the most critical has been the big increase in, in required multifamily zoning, really across the state due to the, due to the higher RENA, higher RENA numbers. Another one is the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, and this essentially, the key provisions of this are that the city can't reduce the density, or the ability of a site to accommodate housing below that which existed on January 1st, 2018. The only way to reduce density is if in the same evening, the council of the city increases density on some other site to make up for the loss of density, and the statute is written to say that increase, it includes any change that would reduce the amount of development on the site, reduced height, increased setbacks, less floor area. You have to account for that and show that other changes, other changes which are adopted the same night make up for any kind of loss that occurred. Another change is that there can't be any moratorium on development without HCD consent, and that consent can only be granted for something that's an imminent threat to health and safety. One of my clients is attempting to get a moratorium for a small area in town because a sewer is failing. That seemed to me to be an imminent threat to health and safety, but, but it has to be something that's, that's that critical. And if the city had growth control limits with a cap, which it does not, HCD has interpreted it to say that those limits can't be enforced. So a new require, oops, sorry. A new requirement is AB 27, which just went into effect on January 1st, 2023, and that applies to projects within a half mile of a major transit stop. And a major transit stop is either a rail station or something within half a mile of the intersection of two bus lines that have less than 15 minutes or no more than 15 minutes headway during peak hours. And within a half mile of a major transit stop, the city can't require or enforce parking requirements unless it completes a study showing that not enforcing the parking would have a substantially negative impact on low, on its regional housing needs, the housing needs of the elderly and disabled, or probably the most general finding, or on residential or commercial parking within half a mile of the project. But even if these findings are made, the city cannot require any parking for housing within half a mile of a major transit stop if it has 20% lower-income housing or it's fewer than 20 units. AB 2011 and SB 6 allow multifamily development where it may not have been permitted previously in zones, and this is the language used in the statute, where commercial, retail, or parking are principally permitted uses, and it's effective July 1st, 2023. I'll say that AB 2011 is probably the most complicated bill I've ever read. It, it has two provisions. One section applies to affordable housing developments, which have somewhat looser standards, and the other section applies to mixed-income projects, which have to have somewhere between 13 and 15% affordable, and there's just numerous, numerous requirements. So, this, this lists some of the requirements, but certainly not all. It applies only to multifamily housing, and it, those bills will go into effect on July 1st. Can't be next to a site with more than a third industrial uses. There's an error on this slide I need to fix. So, also, if the, if the area is covered by a neighborhood plan, which includes a specific plan, the city has lots of specific plans, the city has to have either adopted the plan before January 1st of 2022, or issued a notice of preparation for an EIR before January 1st of 2022, and adopt the plan by January 1st, 2024. So, something that was in effect before January 2022, this bill will only apply if the site allows multifamily development, and if the site only allows commercial development, AB 2011 won't apply. Both bills require payment of prevailing wages, and SB 6 also requires what's called a skilled and trained workforce, which effectively requires that union labor be used or that a project labor agreement be entered into. There's a provision for not using labor, a skilled and trained workforce if the developer attempts to, puts out bids and can't find union labor, very, another very complicated provision, but generally, but both bills require prevailing wages regardless of whether union labor is used. No parking can be required for these projects, except for parking for electric vehicles, disabled parking, or for bicycle parking. For the mixed-income projects need to be, the housing needs to be more than 500 feet from a freeway, needs to be more than 3,200 feet from oil and gas facilities. It's possible to exempt some parcels by allowing more development on some sites and less on the other, same, kind of the same policy as in the Housing Crisis Act. But, but anyway, there's a lot of site and project criteria that apply. One interesting requirement is that it requires that the density of the housing development meet these standards, which are fairly high, for mixed-income housing. An affordable project only needs to be at 30 units an acre, but this is apparently set up as the minimum density, which depending on the size of the site and on the width of the right-of-way that the project is on, and whether it's, whether it's within a half a mile, again, of a major transit stop, has to be, ranges between 30 and 80 units an acre. And then there's maximum height limits that, that the project needs to comply with, which aren't actually that high. I would make the comment that the maximum heights don't seem to match the densities that well. For instance, it's hard to get 40 units an acre at 30, with a 35-foot height limit, but, but anyway, that's, that's what's in the legislation. There's also detailed requirements for setbacks. Anyway, it's very, it's very lengthy and very complicated, very complicated legislation. One of my colleagues has been working on it forever, and we still keep finding new things in it. And then last, the last one I'm going to talk about here is density bonus law. So a project is eligible for a density bonus if it has any-- So a project is eligible for a density bonus if it has anywhere from 5% to 100% affordable housing. And the bonus it's entitled to depends on the affordability of the units. You get a bigger bonus for very low-income units than you do for moderate-income units. And then, of course, the percentage of housing that's affordable. So depending on, so a project with 5% very low-income units is entitled to a 20% bonus. If it's 10% moderate-income units, it only gets a 5% bonus. A 100% affordable housing project is entitled to an 80% bonus for all the lower-income units, but if it's within half a mile of a transit station, again, it gets unlimited density. Projects can get anywhere from 1 to 4 incentives or concessions, which are modifications of the city's development standards to save money. The developer, the definition is that they result in identifiable reductions in costs. But they're entitled also to unlimited waivers of the city's development standards: hide, FAR, setbacks, open space. The most recent case on that one, which is Bankers Hill 150 versus the City of San Diego, the Court of Appeal in that case said that developers were entitled to waivers for the project as designed, unless the city, there's three findings that can be used to deny a waiver. One, the specific adverse impact finding, again, violation of state or federal law, or an impact on a historic, historic structure on the California Register. So very diff, so only, so waivers can only be turned down on, in limited circumstances. These projects are also entitled to reduce parking requirements, again, depending on the affordability and the use. The Housing Accountability Act, AB 2011, SB 35, which I'll get to, all of them say that a project that receives density bonus, waivers, concessions, parking reductions, is considered to be consistent with city standards. The city requires affordable units, inclusionary units, in its, in its, any development of five or more dwelling units requires either 15, for, I'm sorry. For-sale units have to be 15%, either low or moderate. Rental, which are shown here, have to be 5% very low and 10% low. And so any project that meets this standard, any rental project, is entitled to a 27.5% density bonus, plus one concession, and an unlimited number of waivers, just by meeting the city's inclusionary requirements. For a for-sale project, if it's a moderate income, if they use moderate-income units, they're entitled to a 10% bonus. And if they're low-income units, they're entitled to the 27.5% bonus. But in either case, once a project's eligible for a density bonus, it's entitled to unlimited waivers and, you know, some concessions and reduced parking requirements. This was a density bonus project proposed in San Francisco. The city's zoning would have required, the middle building is the new building, and the city's, the city's zoning would have required what you see on the left, but the developer was proposing on the right, just to get a sense of the kind of waivers that could be requested. I actually don't know what's happened to this project. And so lastly, the implications are, the city's required to accept and to approve these projects that conform with state law, even if they're inconsistent with the city's adopted policies, and regardless of any concerns that the city or the community may have about the projects. That's kind of the bottom line of these bills. And with that, we have more time for questions.
10 minutes on the clock. All right. Counsel, any further questions? Yeah?
Mr. Mayor. Yes. Thank you so much for expanding on that. And so, back to page, let's see, 22 at the RENA numbers in the fifth and sixth cycle. So for Burbank, our RENA number for sixth cycle is 8,772 units we need to add. Is our housing element for the sixth cycle, the one that was approved?
Yes. That's what the staff has told me. I saw it on your website, too.
Okay. I was going to say, can we get a link to that? And so what that means is that we've identified opportunity sites, enough opportunity sites in our city to be able to realistically create 8,772 units?
Yes.
Yes, but some of the opportunity sites will be fully entitled once the specific plans are approved. So there are implementation actions under the housing element that we still need to carry out within the sixth cycle to achieve those.
I have one more question. So for the housing element, does that also include the other bits with the being able to use land that's originally zoned for commercial and those other kind of provisions? Or is it more our intention to put housing in certain places in the city? Or is it a little both?
Even though your housing element has been approved, if there's a commercial site that's not shown for housing in your housing element and that meets all these requirements, they can still build housing on it, in addition to whatever you're showing in the housing element?
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Great. Any other questions? No? Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions on this section?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. I'm well familiar with the arguments about, I'm talking about AB 2097, the elimination of parking minimums within a proximity of high transit corridors. I'm familiar with the arguments against it and the arguments for local control. Can you speak to the policy rationale for why the legislature looked at parking minimums as one way to reduce the cost of housing?
I mean, what I've read in terms of the, I've heard a couple of arguments. One argument is that private developers are better able to determine parking needs than cities, and that they, you know, when a project is built, if a developer believes that the parking is needed, the developer will provide it. Other rationales are that there's eight parking spaces for every car, and that it increases the cost of housing and everything else. So those are the kind of arguments. I mean, the other argument is that it'll increase, it will induce people to use public transit.
Okay. Thank you.
So those are, those are some of the arguments I'm, you know, yeah.
Thank you very much. My only other question is, kind of looking at the inverse of that. So the legislature's looked at eliminating parking minimums. To your knowledge, or if there's any other member of staff who can answer it, that's okay, too, has there been a discussion about parking maximums or putting a limitation on how much parking can be required?
The city's allowed to have a parking maximum, if I recall the bill clearly, and some cities do have parking maximums. San Francisco, for instance.
And how, just one very quick follow-up, if I might, Mr. Mayor. How does that work in San Francisco? What is it that the supervisors have done there?
I think they've just adopted an ordinance. But I, I'm sorry, I haven't, you know, I haven't really looked at it, but it, yeah. It's been, it's actually been in effect for some years.
Thank you very much.
All right. Great. Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for reminding me about the parking question. Very good questions. And I wanted to follow up with, it says, I think, in, oh, gosh, I'm not sure which AB or SB this is, but that all, on page 26, that no parking can be required except disabled EV and for bikes. That's for 20, AB 2011.
Right.
Okay. So is that, how's that coincide with AB 2097 that says no, no parking can be required for, within a half a mile?
I think if, so it's actually much broader than, it's much broader than AB 2097, which is limited to areas within a half mile of a major transit stop. 2011 applies really, you know, any project that manages to qualify for AB 2011 does not need to provide any parking, except for those three categories.
But for projects-
Unless they choose to.
Okay. But for projects that are AB 2097 that aren't 2011, can we require disabled EV or bike parking for those?
Yes. Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We're under time. Let's keep moving.
All right. Thanks. Oops. Oops, there we go. Sorry. There we go. Okay. So this part is about ministerial and by right approvals. So the definition of a ministerial approval is a governmental decision that involves little or no personal judgment by the, by the city, by a public official, and involves only the use of fixed standards and objective requirements. And I've realized as I prepared this, that the state is kind of moving everything into that category. Under the, under the SEQA guidelines, the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, a ministerial approval is exempt from SEQA. And as the state has adopted this legislation, in addition to making the decisions ministerial, they've also adopted very strict timelines for approval. So the projects that have to be approved ministerially are accessory dwelling units, SB, SB 9 projects, which are either two-unit developments or what are called urban lot splits, splitting a single-family property into two and allowing two units on each site. SB 35, which is a streamlined ministerial review for housing developments, and AB 2011, housing projects in commercial zones, which I've already talked about, and which references the SB 35 guidelines, and it basically sets up a process that's very similar to SB 35 once a project manages to qualify for AB 2011. So I have a couple slides here on ADUs in SB 9, but I, I think that the council has probably, you know, heard about both of these, both of these numerous times before. So I think, as the council knows, that all the accessory dwelling unit provisions allow accessory dwelling units in residential zones in connection with both single-family and multifamily housing, requires ministerial approval in 60 days, and overrides any city standards. The state adopted yet more changes to the ADU laws last year. So the critical ones were that attached, ADUs that are attached to the home can be 25 feet high, or the height limit in the zone, if that happens to be lower than 25 feet. Before that, the maximum height had been 16 feet. In some areas also, the height can be 18 feet. They, they clarified that structures up to 800 square feet are allowed in the front yard. And they also restricted the cities, these new, these new changes, in many cases restrict the city's ability to correct building code, housing code, and zoning violations on the site unless the building official makes a finding that it's a health and safety problem. With SB 9, which was not, which was adopted in, which became effective last year, January 1st, 2022, the intent there was to allow four units on a single-family lot, requires, again, that, there's two ways to do it. One is to not do a lot split. You can construct two, what are called primary dwelling units, either two single-family homes or a duplex, plus a couple of ADUs without splitting your lot. Or someone can split the lot in two and build two units on each site. Could be two duplexes, it could be a single-family home and an ADU, but essentially allows any owner of a single-family home to do that. In order to do an urban lot split, though, the owner has to sign an affidavit saying that they intend to live in the site for three years. So I think that has somewhat confined it to mostly owner occupants. Again, if the units are no more than 800 square feet, the city needs to waive all of its development standards in order to allow those units to exist. So this process is still called by almost everybody SB 35 projects, either though, even though SB 35 was adopted in 2017 and has been amended numerous, numerous times, but it's, that's easier than calling it the streamlined review process. So people, everybody calls, seems to call it still SB 35. And anyway, so generally, a qualifying project, you know, it has to be, a multifamily residential project has to be two-thirds of the square footage, has to be residential, as like the Housing Accountability Act. It has to have at least 10% lower income in Burbank, although you require that for most of your projects anyway. The general plan or the zoning has to allow residential or mixed use. And the language in SB 35 is very specific that if there's any really difference between the general plan and the zoning, the general plan, the general plan applies. It has to be a site where no housing was occupied by tenants in the last 10 years. If there's more than 10 units, the project has to meet prevailing wages. And it has to be consistent with objective standards, but again, people can request, the applicant can request density bonus waivers if not. There's other qualifications as well. It can't be a wetland. If it's in a floodplain or, or in a high fire hazard zone, it has to meet certain standards. You know, any hazmat needs to be corrected, but, but essentially, these are some of the big, some of the big qualifications. So the streamlined review process is really what, what's tough on the staff and I think tough on the community. One thing is that applicant, under SB 35, an applicant can't even submit an application until a tribal consultation is consulted, is completed. So that requires the city to notify the tribes involved, that are considered to be involved with Burbank. The tribes get 30 days to respond, and then if they, if they choose to respond, then until there's an agreement reached between the city and the tribe, the applicant can't submit the application. And it really puts the, really unless there's an agreement reached between the city and the tribe, or the tribe declines to participate, the project can't proceed under SB 35. So the, so the tribes can control what projects can qualify. But the tough is that the city has to complete the consistency review, like the one that's done for the Housing Accountability Act, within 60 or 90 days after the project's submitted. Not after it's complete, but after it's submitted. So even if it's a very incomplete application, the applicant has to get, is entitled to get a very detailed list of the problems with the project within 60 or 90 days, and the same threshold applies over 150 units or less, 60 days, more than 150 units, 90 AB 20, and then the city has to reach a decision. They can complete, they can hold design review hearings, which are quite limited, but they have to reach a decision within 90 to 180 days after submittal. So as I indicate here, AB 2011 process is identical to this, except there's no tribal consultation, except possibly on vacant lots. It's a little bit unclear. But in general, there's no tribal consultation. So the AB 2011, the decision has to be made much faster by the city. SB 6 does not set up a separate process for, for developing commercial sites, but it allows SB 35 to be used on sites that are zoned commercial with only half residential rather than two-thirds residential. This is just a little chart about AB 2011 versus SB 35. I think, I think the adv- I think the advantages of AB 2011 to a developer is it allows residential development in a commercial zone, whereas SB 35, it has to already be zoned residential, and that there's no required tribal consultation. That's a benefit to a developer under AB 2011. And I think, anyway. So these implications for Burbank, I think, are the timelines are very fast, and so it places huge demands on the staff. And like the Housing Accountability Act, if the staff doesn't provide this letter about inconsistencies within 60 or 90 days, the project's deemed consistent. And very limited time for community input, although you can have a public hearing once the project appears to be consistent. The scope is very limited. The statute says that the hearings can't chill, inhibit, or preclude the ministerial approval. So, you know, you have very limited discretion, and really what the public can influence is very limited. That's how the legislature wanted it to be. And under SB 35, only standard conditions can apply. So there's just a very, you know, a very limited scope here. There's something else called by right approvals, which applies to housing element sites that either need to be upzoned for lower-income housing, or sites that were what we call reused sites, sites that were shown in the last housing element but not developed and are shown in this housing element for lower-income housing. And it applies, again, it's, there are projects that don't have any review under the California Environmental Quality Act. The only approval the city can give is objective design review. And it applies on these sites if they have 20% lower-income housing and no subdivision is needed. So basically, it applies to rental housing that's 20% affordable. It also applies to supportive housing developments that meet some standards and what the state calls low barrier navigation centers, which are kind of enhanced emergency shelters, I guess I'd call them. And here, at least there is not the kind of accelerated timeline for by right projects. And the city has a little bit more flexibility in imposing design conditions. But the city still, because it's a housing project, needs to find inconsistencies within, you know, or tell the developer there are inconsistencies within 30 or 60 days after the application's complete. But there's not quite the same detailed timeline for approvals. So happy to answer any questions about this.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Ms. Couts only has six more slides-
Okay.
-to get to the final Q and A-
Yeah.
-which would help us get done before six, and then council can decide how much-
Oops, sorry.
-additional time.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Let's, can we just finish up real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
I think it needs to get. Okay. So this is consequences of noncompliance. HCD staff has expanded enormously. They have a housing accountability unit that has at least 25 staff. They, you know, each bill gives them more and more authority. And so what cities have been receiving, and I think Burbank received these at one time, if they think you're doing something wrong, they'll send you a letter of technical advice saying, "Don't do it." And then if you do it, they'll send you a notice of violation saying they're about ready, unless you change what you did, they're going to refer you to the Attorney General. The Attorney General also has a 12-member strike force, and that can act independently. The Attorney General was unhappy with Pasadena's SB 9 ordinance, and without actually involving a HCD, sent them, you know, sent them the equivalent of a notice of violation. HCD can decertify a housing element if the city isn't doing what it promised to do, isn't adopting the zoning. They have a new division of proactive enforcement. They've been, they respond mostly on, mostly by complaints. I got an email from HCD encouraging me to complain about, giving me detailed instructions about how to complain to them. But nonetheless, there've actually been very few lawsuits that they filed. They mostly have been writing letters. The lawsuit risk has come from these active third-party litigants. So they've sued at least 10 Southern California cities and 12 Bay Area cities about their housing element. And they often join in, which they did in the pickwick litigation that the city had. So the developers sued the city, but a group called YMB Law also sued the city. So they often pile on to these, and they've been actively promoting the use of the builder's Housing cases in general have not gone well for cities. That's why we usually try to settle cases if we, you know, if they seem settleable. The courts have been very pro-housing, very pro the city's housing law. The one case where they maybe will uphold it, a challenge, is involving the California Environmental Quality Act, although that's, you know, that's iffy. So in general, in general, the courts have been very strong about upholding the legislator's right to adopt these laws. And the city risks, you know, very significant attorney's fee exposure, because all these laws have attorney's fee provisions saying that if the city loses, they pay the other side's attorney's fees, plus, of course, their own defense costs. And so, so anyway, as I said, we try to encourage people to comply. And then ongoing public engagement. So the city, the city staff has made a real effort to try to keep the community in the know. All complete project applications are posted online within 21 days. The staff has indicated to us that they intend to hold community information meetings, even with the ministerial projects, SB 35, AB 2011, post-project signs, and also, of course, the usual electronic notification and mailed public notices. These last two slides, which can't really be read very easily, are basically what the, we're just including them so they're in the packet for people to look at, but these are the city's efforts to date with all the laws, which has involved a huge amount of staff, staff time. So, anyway, with that, I guess we can go to questions.
Okay. Any final questions on this last few sections? Yes, Councilmember Takashi?
Thank you. And I bet Vice Mayor does, too. Thank you so much for this presentation. I thought I knew a lot about these AB and SBs, and I learned a lot today, so thank you so much. A general question about the provisions in the various laws that give allowances for percentage of low-cost housing. For these low-cost housing units, are they all required to be deed restricted?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a certain minimum amount of time that they're required to be deed restricted for?
Generally, in most of the bills, it's 55 years for rentals and 45 years for for-sale. The density bonus statute's a little bit different. It only prescribes an equity share for for-sale units, but if the city adopts its own density bonus ordinance that requires longer affordability, it can do that.
Okay. So a builder can't build with a certain percentage of low income, and then a year later, you know, evict somebody and resell it as a higher income again, they have to keep it at the low price for 55 years?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Great. And then also, just a general question, actually, for staff. It was mentioned that it's important for the community to be able to keep track of these developments. I believe we have a page that lists all of the developments in the cities that correct for the community to be able to look them up and see what the status is?
Yes, that is correct.
Maybe in this material that's on being provided for the community, that link could also be provided as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I can add that.
Yes, Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent presentation. I too learned so much tonight. And I think we have enough material here to understand that we don't have power. I think it's very obvious from the presentation that our power has been taken away, and the state has given that power to developers to come in and, you know, make housing happen in the city of Burbank, which, in a way, it saddened me personally, because I think, especially over the parking situation, the parking that would impact our neighborhoods, would impact the adjacent housing and neighborhoods. But we know that we don't have the power when they allow them to come in just because they're near transportation. I mean, and you have nothing to do with this. I just wanted to share somewhat of, you know, what I hear from the community and also the concerns that we hear about why is the city trying to stop this, and why do we allow development to happen the way they happen today? And this was very obvious in your presentation, that's because the state allows them to do so, and we're restricted to how much we can actually do. With that, I do want to recommend something to city manager, if it's possible, in regards to making this material available. I know we have the front page of our city website. It'd probably be helpful maybe to have that presentation on the front page, so maybe the public, they don't have to go look for it under Granicus or Study Session, just as a form of, if possible, it can be done, just a quick link for Study Session, and that would also provide the attached materials, so to make it accessible to the public. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Press?
Just going off of what Councilmember Mullen said, I also know we received some comments from the public asking for more time to speak on this issue and ask more questions, and I really commend you for putting such a lengthy bit of information-
I'm sorry.
-into this. No, I hear you. Listen, I used to work for the state. This is not something I could have wrapped up in the time that you wrapped it up, so thank you for that. But to the members of the public who do have questions, I encourage you to email us, email the city, you know, the city council general email, and ask your questions. We'll make sure that they get answered, because this is not easy material, so.
All right. Vice Mayor, do you have any final thoughts, questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Outstanding presentation. Really appreciate your time. You did a great job with it. So the two things I wanted to close on are, we're here today in part because of the pickwick, and I won't waste our time going back to the slide, but in one of your slides, you were doing a comparison side by side of Senate Bill 35 and Assembly Bill 2011. So I guess my question with regards to Senate Bill 35 is, would you agree that the takeaway is, if you're a local municipality, under the state law as it is, even if a parcel is not zoned residential, if your intent is for it to never have residential, you should not identify it as an opportunity site in your general plan? Because doing that now opens the door to development on that parcel.
Yes, I think under SB 35, if there's any language that would allow residential development on the site, someone can make an application. But of course, AB 2011 allows development, even on sites that clearly are zoned commercial, so, you know, if they can meet all the requirements.
Thank you. And my last question was, again, really thorough job, appreciated the analysis of Assembly Bill 2011. Are you able to, as you sit here today, give us just a 30-second preview? I know that there's more coming. There's Senate Bill 4 making its way through the legislature right now. Can you give the public just a taste of what kind of issues the legislature is grappling with this cycle?
I was sent a list of 400 bills, something like 400 bills. There's a lot of spot bills in the legislature. I, you know what a spot bill is. It says, "I want to do something about housing," but it doesn't really say what. Some of the ones that struck my mind, there was one that would require, it's by the author of AB 2097, that would require allowances for shared parking. Senator Weiner wants, SB 35 is actually about to sunset, so he has, I think it would sunset in 2025, so he wants to extend that. There's another very complicated bill that I think has slipped under everybody's radar that is trying to tie the California Environmental Quality Act to the Housing Accountability Act. I read it, and I thought, oh my, no, I won't say my, I read it, and I thought, how will anybody interpret this? This is so difficult. Oh, what are, there, I'm trying to think about the other ones I pulled out. Anyway, there's, all I can say is there are dozens of housing bills being proposed. I had thought, you know, there was a big turnover in the legislature this year, I think, about a third of new members, and I had thought maybe they would have come from local government and thought, oh, this is too much. But no, they all seemed very eager to get their name on, name in.
Well, thank you again. Outstanding presentation, and for what it's worth, and for the public's consumption. Senate Bill 4, as I recall, would apply a very similar model as Assembly Bill 2011 and/or Senate Bill 35, but to higher education institutions and religious institutions. So I think there is certainly more to come and more for us to monitor as a city. But thank you, ma'am. Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Couts, for your presentation, and I believe that concludes the lesson and all of that stuff. I have one question, Mr. City Attorney. Can we have any comments from our planning board? Is that possible?
You absolutely may do that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, great. I would now ask Planning Board if any of them would like to speak. They can come up to the podium, either ask some questions, make some comments, do be brief. We do have another meeting that's butting up against us. Chair Rosati, thank you.
Mayor, council members, I would just encourage you, and I'll piggyback off Ms. Mullen's, I would encourage you to meet with our local representatives, to do your best to fight for our city, to paint every community with the same broad brush up and down California. Doesn't make Burbank special anymore. People live in this city for a reason. I sell this city every day. I know what makes it special. And to paint the city with the same broad brush as every other community, I heard San Francisco mentioned here several times, this is not San Francisco, this is not North Hollywood, this is not Van Nuys, this is not San Diego. And there's a reason why people move to this city, and I would just, I know that your hands are tied, I know that we probably shouldn't have, we probably should have supplied more housing in the past, but we need to do whatever we can to have our local representatives just move the pendulum a little further in our direction, because if we don't have control over our community, we will lose what makes it special. And I think we have a staff here, we have council members here, and we have community here that knows what is special about Burbank, and we should have some say in that. And that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate those comments. We will now adjourn the special joint meeting with the Planning Commission. Council will reconvene at, well, two minutes. We'll take a two-minute break, and then we'll come back, so 6:05.